Welcome to the October 6th meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called, the applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions if any, and members of the public may make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and for against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a speaker would hear a loud beep and indicate one minute left to speak, and at that time, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, an applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone at the bottom of the stairs, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience, and please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applicants, the commission will go into the deliberation session. In that session, commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and the results can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the applicant or the application, but depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there's only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both are already voting due to absences. The Planning Commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments, or PUDs. And it is reminded that the Planning Commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decision. At this time, I remind everyone to turn their cellphones to silent or off. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll move to the roll call. Myself, Jay Stubbs, present. Mr. Alan Cameron, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Mr. Carlos Gant.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Mr. Nick Amburger.
Here.
Mr. Scott Jones.
Miss Susan Carley.
Mr. Kirk Matei.
We have a quorum, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for October 6th.
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? We will move on to the agenda. First item is a holdover. 625, 635, 645, numerous addresses at Dolls Road. We have a subdivision. And a PUD. Is the applicant present? Alright, it's been recommended for tentative approval with sixteen conditions on the subdivision, and it looks like findings of fact for approval, of which there were six listed, and then seventeen, nineteen conditions. Are you in agreement with staff on the recommendations? Good to go. Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number One on Dolls Road? Is there anyone else here to speak against Agenda Item Number One on Dolls Road? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Two. New subdivision application, 3108 Lee's Lane. It's been recommended for tentative approval with eleven conditions. Is the applicant present? Sorry, I'm not seeing anybody. Is the applicant present? Oh, are you in agreement with those conditions? You're not the applicant on Lee's Lane. Okay, is the applicant present on 3108, 3108 Lee's Lane? Staff, did you have any comments from the applicant on their...
No, sir.
Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Two, 3108 Lee's Lane? Is there anyone here in the audience to speak against this agenda item? Alright, seeing none, we didn't have any comments, but it was recommended for tentative approval with eleven listed conditions. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, 258 North Hamilton Street. Been recommended for tentative approval with nine listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the conditions? Applicant's present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Three, 258 North Hamilton Street? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to Number Four. 4359 Fieldwood Drive, La Caos subdivision, been recommended for tentative approval with eight conditions. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present and in agreement with the conditions? Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Four, 4359 Fieldwood Drive? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that agenda item? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Five, a new section of the agenda, new rezoning applications. We do have a recusal for Mr. Carlos Gant. 2819 Government Boulevard, the Royal Academy daycare. It's been recommended for approval with two listed notations and two conditions. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Five, 2819 Government Boulevard or Royal Academy daycare? Again, this is a rezoning application, it's been recommended for approval. Anyone here to speak against Agenda Item Number Five? Staff, any comments from the applicant? Moving right along, Agenda Item Number Six. This is under group applications, where we have multiple items under each agenda item. 3200 and 3202 Old Shell Road. Been recommend, we have a subdivision and a PUD. And a rezone recommendation. Been recommended for tentative approval with eight listed conditions on the subdivision, recommended for approval with findings of fact, of which there are five, and then thirteen conditions for the PUD, and then the rezone is recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Chairman, before he begins, I do want to draw to the commission's attention, you do have revised engineering comments at your seats, and you also have photos at your seats some of the commission members will need to share.
Name and address, sir? Yes, sir.
2609...
It is now.
Okay. Okay. Number Two, retention dedication of twenty-five-foot radius curve. Actually, on the subdivision plat and what you see with the staff report, PUD plat, I actually have a fifteen-foot radius on that corner. I put it there because of the angle of that, instead of ninety degrees. It's, I don't know, seventy-five degrees or something like that, where twenty-five-foot radius would really eat back into the property. Both streets have concrete curbing, and all the utilities are in place around that corner. Asking for the approval of fifteen-foot radius. It's been approved in the downtown areas and a few other midtown mobile areas where, like I say, the streets are paved, curbing, and utilities are in place. But we would ask for that, or maybe the condition twenty-five foot or as approved by city engineer and if it needs more study on the planned unit development recommendations. Number One, revision of site plan to provide a twenty-four-foot wide drive along the northern portion of Lot A to access B. We're showing a twenty-seven-foot wide asphalt drive up there, so number one really is not Number Two, staff is recommending elimination of the head-in, back-out parking on Old Shell Road. That parking has been there a long time. The building on that lot is from property line to property line. The head-in parking in the front would be used by customers, clients, whoever, employees accessing the rear with an entry into the rear of the building. All the pictures that are up and down, there's seven businesses, starting about eight hundred feet west of this site, close to I-65 Service Road, all the way to, hmm, almost Florida Street, which is High Cotton Consignment. There are, like I say, there's seven of them that have head-in, back-out parking. One that really stands out is the Mobile Fire Rescue Building that's got sixteen painted parking spaces. I think? Yeah. Eighteen, excuse me, eighteen painted parking spaces. So apparently, the head-in, back-out has not created a problem along Old Shell Road. So we're asking for elimination of Condition Number Two. Which, by eliminating Number Two, we don't need Number Three in the PUD, which is to put two additional compliant parking in the rear. It wouldn't be necessary, we'll have to count. That's about it. Don't have any other complaints?
Any questions for commissioners or comments from staff or Mr. Byrd?
I do have one for the traffic engineering folks. Have y'all looked at these recommendations? And what's your, what's your recommendation based off of...
Specific to the back-out parking?
That, and the reduction in the curbs.
The radius. We have agreed to the reduction in the radius in the past, and it does make sense on skewed streets. And quite honestly, there's not that much more real estate we would get if we did it any less or any greater. I mean, this is about the even ground between no radius and a twenty-five-foot radius. So it's a fair compromise. As far as the back-out parking, there, some of the areas that have come for redevelopment have had to do right-of-way use agreements to allow it to remain. It is not right adjacent to the street, and so there is some potential to maneuver still in the right-of-way, but they won't have to be in the roadway to actually back out if the commission chose to allow it to remain.
So you would support both of his requests?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is it safe to not reduce that curb, that curb cut? Because that's, we're talking about two pretty narrow roads right there, and Old Shell is a very busy road.
So the twenty-five feet he's requesting is the property line, not the curb radius itself from road to road? So that's the difference. Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify, so Mr. Byrd would add, or we would add to the plat or to the recommendations that the developer get a right-of-way use agreement to allow the head-in parking? I think that'd be pretty easy to...
That would be on the PUD. Because that's site plan specific. It, to me, is not required on the subdivision, because subdivision's just the lot lines and rights of way, they do not show, the subdivision plat does not show improvements.
I guess that would only be required if that parking did actually approach into the right-of-way. So if it's not approaching the right-of-way, we wouldn't require the right-of-way use agreement. It kind of leads me into my question. What's been the standard for other buildings, like developed, redeveloped along there? I think about the Bluebird Building, and then there's a couple of other facilities around it, along that corridor that have been redeveloped. Do they, do we recall if they had on that front-end parking to start with, and were they required to eliminate it? I mean, it's, I...
Well, the Bluebird Building eliminated any head-in parking that was on Old Shell Road, but I think they were allowed to keep that on Bay Shore, but I believe they had to get a use agreement for that side.
Any other, any of the other buildings along? Yeah.
What the commission could do if they want to allow the head-in parking to remain is put the obtaining of a right-of-way use agreement if applicable.
It kind of, it kind of doesn't look, looking at aerial, depending where the lines actually are, it looks like it's going to be closed, but maybe, maybe not. PUD plat that's with the staff report has those lines among, guess, one or two feet north of the right-of-way line of Old Shell Road.
Mr. Byrd, if we could, let's make sure we all have an understanding of the requested revisions. On the subdivision itself, you're wanting to have Condition Number Two as a fifteen-foot radius?
Yes.
And then on the PUD, you're asking for deletion of Conditions Two and Three?
Um, yeah, and actually, Number One also.
So one through three?
Yeah.
Ms. Papas, if I could interject. It appears as though the driveway and the access aisle on site don't align, and so there may still need to be improvements, at least to the driveway, for it to align with twenty-four foot access on the property. Is that, I don't know how visible that is on the site plan above, but the driveway itself in the right-of-way is offset from the access aisle on the private property.
I see what you're saying.
So I don't know that there's twenty-four continuous feet if there's a pinch point.
Well, if it was signage, say, an employee-only in career, would it have to be even twenty-four feet wide?
Mr. Byrd, you're going to have to have some accessible parking somewhere, and I don't think that's going to be in the front, so I would suggest you need the twenty-four-foot wide driveway on Abrams Street.
All good, Mr. Byrd?
That's it.
Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Six? Anyone here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item Number Six? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Seven, 1263 Baker Street. We have a recusal in Kirk Matei. We have a subdivision recommended for tentative approval with ten listed conditions. We have, we have a rezone recommended for approval with listed conditions as well. Ms. Papas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may suggest the modification to the subdivision of Conditions Number Three and Four to read Vacation of Bay Street prior to signing of the final plat, or show the Bay Street right-of-way on the final plat. There's ongoing survey work regarding that. And then Number Four, Vacation of the ICG Railroad Right-of-Way plot prior to signing the final plat, or show the railroad right-of-way on the final plat.
Noted on Three and Four in the staff recommendation. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the conditions on both the subdivision and the rezone? Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Seven? Anyone here to speak in opposition to 1263 Baker Street? Seeing none, we will move on. Number Eight, 3661 Dolphin Street. Dolphin Way Baptist Church subdivision. We have a application for the subdivision, we have an application for the PUD. The subdivision's been recommended for tentative approval with twelve listed conditions, and the PUD recommended for approval with three findings of fact and thirteen conditions. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement on both? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to Number Nine. West side of Satchel Page Drive, the McGowan Park subdivision. We have recommendation for tentative approval with eleven listed conditions. We have a recommendation for the PUD with findings of fact, of which there are five and thirteen listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Are y'all in agreement with the conditions for the subdivision and the findings of fact and conditions for the PUD? Applicant is present and in agreement? Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against Agenda Item Number Nine in the McGowan Park area? Seeing none, we will move on. Agenda Item Ten, south side of Dolphin Street, between Sage extending to the east side of Sage, and then south of Dolphin Street extending to the west termini of Exeter Drive and Sherwood Drive South. We have a tentative approval recommendation with fourteen listed conditions for the subdivision, and we have an approval recommendation with findings of fact for the PUD and nineteen listed conditions. And we have a rezone recommendation for approval. And I do believe we have some notes at our desk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have updated traffic engineering comments at your places, as well as a letter of support from Councilmember Penn.
Thank you for that. Is the applicant present for Agenda Item Ten? Are you in agreement with the conditions for the subdivision and the PUD and the rezone? The applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Number Ten? Anyone here to speak against Agenda Item Number Ten? Alright, we will move on. Agenda Item Eleven, 3520 Spanish Alley. The application is recommended for denial due to three reasons. Same thing with the PUD, planned unit development recommended for denial. Is the applicant present? Do you have any comments on the recommendation of denial for the application? Okay, come on down.
Mr. Chairman, while he's making his way to the podium, I'd bring to your attention that you have one email in support, and then you have some emails and online comments in opposition.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. My name's Philip Quinley. My wife's name is Crystal Wagner Quinley. We, our address is 3520 Spanish Alley. We purchased this seven-and-a-half acres. It's between River de Sheen and Osmeal Creek. We have had some, some problems with drug puffinella showing up on our, on our property, and we've, we've caught two different guys, ties a kite on our property. One was on my boathouse, taking shelter, bloody, blood all over him, he shot my flare guns and everything, and he, he ended up being one of the grandson of a elderly lady off of Shadowwood. And then we had another guy show up, said he just got out of the jail, he's ties a kite as well, his son was playing in the yard, and he, he said that he was, that voices were sending him, said his girlfriend, his ex-girlfriend was on our property in our house. I told him that was my wife in the, in the house, and he was, his girlfriend was not there, and we just recently found some used needles on our property, and our neighbor next door has had to do a restraining order against the guy that has been, you know, pursuing her, and they've got a restraining order against him, and so now, and we've also had guys dumping trailer loads of trash into the cul-de-sac right here. So this entire, what you're looking at is seven-and-a-half acres that we own, it's all three lots that we own. We don't have any plans of doing a subdivision, like selling Lot Two and Lot Three. This cul-de-sac goes into our property, and so we just want to know what we can do, what you suggest, if you have some recommendations. We want, we want to protect, I want to protect my wife and my kids, and when we brought this up to Mobile Fence, they said that the ideal place to gate it would be across the opening of, to get your recommendation on it, and also to, to fit the gate across the street at the cul-de-sac on our property line. So that's what I'm here for, and I've got, there's, there's several, every street, I've got copies of the map, and our area, there's four dead-end streets that are the closest streets, that, the River de Sheen Court is a dead-end street, it's a dead-end street or River de Sheen Road, and there's two other Spanish alleys. There's another Spanish alley on the other side that is a dead-end, that people think when I call 311 to tell them to clean up Spanish alley, they go to the wrong Spanish alley, and I end up having to clean it up myself. So it's, there's several things that we're trying to fix at this area. So I own all the land around that cul-de-sac, all three acres, that whole piece is mine and my wife's. And so that's what I would like to bring to your attention, see what recommendations y'all would have for us to get that off for protection of my family.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is, um, this is the existing cul-de-sac. It is there, it is city right-of-way, it is constructed. The applicant's correct, you know, these streets here, dead-end, but they are existing conditions. The, this here, it's city right-of-way, it's built, and the only way that the commission can approve this is if the city council agrees to vacate the right-of, the right-of-way. I, I know the commission is very sympathetic and understanding for security concerns for the citizen. The only option that is available that I can immediately think of in absence of vacating the right-of-way is that instead of putting it straight across the street, the gate and fence is going to need to go in the radius around, around the existing street, because the commission cannot approve the vacation of this street. That is going to have to be done by city council.
Just to clarify for us and the applicant, the vacation process requires signatures from all adjoining landowners? Is that correct? And the applicant would be the only landowner in that situation?
No. It's everybody affected on Spanish Alley, so it would include these owners as well.
Why, why are they affected? Because that cul-de-sac leads nowhere, there's nowhere...
Why, why are they affected because that, that cul-de-sac leads nowhere, there's nowhere.
But that cul-de-sac provides the turnaround for the trash trucks, postal service, fire trucks.
If, if we vacated that, is there any way to create a cul-de-sac to be in?
Uh, no, not giving the exist, given the existing right of way width. The right of way width here until you meet the throat of the cul-de-sac is 47 and a half feet. So that would then require the dedication from these property owners to provide the radius for the turnaround.
Doesn't make sense to me, these, these homeowners down here are able to get in without using the cul-de-sac.
This one's built and constructed, this is an existing condition.
I'm talking about the homeowners to the, to the north of their property that's in question. They're able to get into their properties back out without any cul-de-sac. So if, if that cul-de-sac was removed.
What, what?
What, what is not able to get in and out without that cul-de-sac?
I think what you, what you got going on there is a bunch of pretty substandard streets by any, any today standards. There were probably little fishing camps back in the day, long time ago. So you've got pieces and parts that are, that are, that are modern, pieces and parts that are not. And what Margaret's trying to say is that you can have stub streets, but I think they can only be maybe like 100 feet long to meet, meet a fire code. So if you, if they vacated, if they try to just vacate that cul-de-sac, that street's not, that street's not long enough. Fire code, you can't, you can't do that. And, and rightfully garbage trucks and other vehicles are going down there, it's a public, it's a public right of way. Turnaround, otherwise they're backing, backing down streets. All of the neighbors, all that Spanish Alley could come and propose the whole thing to be vacated. Well, then they end up losing garbage service to the front of their house, they end up losing the city's maintenance of the road, so.
Yeah.
If it's a public street, there's public amenities that go along with it, if it's private, it's a different, it's a different animal. Now Margaret, there was a discussion at one time, I don't know if you ever got codified where in some subdivisions, we had people requesting gates that would open to any vehicle, not, not be on a code or anything like that. Would be open to any vehicle where give the appearance of a gated street, but any vehicle that pulled up to it. I'm not aware of us having permitted any of those, but I hear y'all's thoughts on that.
Nothing beyond what you just said. There was discussion along that vein for new proposals. I don't believe we've had any since then and I cannot think of an instance where we've had it where it would stipulate a vacation.
And I don't think for traffic and for engineering, we've, we've not permitted any, that's, nothing like that has come to us and we've actually permitted a, I guess a gate that opens to any vehicle.
Correct, just been talked about, but none have been installed.
So Mr. Chairman, so you feel pretty confident that the vagrants or whoever are getting on your property, you feel pretty confident they're coming up Spanish Alley and coming through that cul-de-sac? You know, like Ms. Pappas said, we can't, we can't vacate a street and, you know, it's really difficult to get anything vacated. It's a, a really high hurdle. However, and I think she was also correct in saying that your best path forward might be getting the fence permit instead so that you can just do that on your property. That might even be more affordable than a gate anyway. And, and it would perhaps protect some more of the ingress that these ne'er-do-wells are using to get onto your property anyway. And, and I'll just tell you that the administration will go to bat for you to make sure that you're able to get a fence permit and, and protect your property.
Alright, so. Come to the microphone. Philip, come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The, alright, so all those streets right there, there's a, there's a smaller trash truck that has to go down there because of that reason. There, there's a large trash truck that runs down River de Sheen and everything, but all these small streets, we have a small truck that has to go in there and get all the trash because they can't do the turnarounds on all the other four streets. So, and there's only two neighbors on, on River de Sheen, there's, I have, there's three people that live on Spanish Alley right there and there's, there's two on the right and one on the left. And it's just, it's just three people. So I just want to make you aware of that, I'm, I have been working with the city clerk, you know, submitting, what, trying to walk through that process of vacating.
Any further comments from commissioners on this application, agenda item number 11? Anyone else to speak on agenda item number 11, given the commentary that's already happened? Alright. Seeing none, we'll move on to number 12. I said anyone else wants to speak on the agenda item after all the conversation has, that has transpired? Okay, come on down. You're right, I didn't use the word for or against, my apologies.
My name's Karen Murphy and I live at 3525 Spanish Alley. And I have a lot of concerns because the, my main concern is my daughter has autism and she has to take a special needs bus. And the bus has to go and turn around and we've been doing that for over 10 years. And I talked to the bus driver and she said, no, we, if, if we can't use the turnaround, we can't pick her up through the bus. And also it could block like other emergency vehicles, like ambulances, if they were in a hurry, they wouldn't be able to get out fast enough. And my daughter rides her bike down that cul-de-sac, that's the only safe place for her to ride her bike and her scooter and walk around in the neighborhood. And the cul-de-sac is part of our, all of our neighbors use the cul-de-sacs for enjoyment of our neighborhood to ride our bikes, walk our dogs. For the kids, you know, it's a safe place for, like if I sold my house, somebody else might move in that house that had kids. And if a special needs bus can't get down there, which is a short bus, there's no way, you know, long bus really couldn't get down there, you know, so. Those are my concerns, I just, I brought the property with the understanding that I would be able to have my daughter's bus and enjoyment of the cul-de-sac.
Before, before anybody else speaks, and I'm not saying you can't speak, but this board cannot legally do what he's asked. We cannot block the street, we cannot vacate a right of way, that cul, no, we cannot do anything to affect that cul-de-sac today. So it's, it's there.
And if it were to.
He has other things he might be able to do, but not today, not before this board.
But Doug, they would also require their signature as property owners on the street, correct? To proceed.
Correct.
A vacation is a very, very lengthy process. City council ultimate approval, but utility owners, I mean, it's, it's just a very, very complicated process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition, given the commentary that's already transpired? Okay. Now we'll move on to agenda item 12. 1617 Brill Road, the bridge, bridge the gap subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval with 10 listed conditions on the subdivision. We have a PUD with approval of findings of fact of which there are five listed and 16 conditions. And a rezone, excuse me, a planning approval recommendation with three findings of fact. And then the rezone recommended for approval. So on applicant, application item number 12, is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with all findings of fact and conditions in each of the four components of your application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may bring to the commission's attention, you should each have a copy of the petition at your place in opposition to these applications.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a note on this, and I'll, I'll make this motion when we get to it, but city council president has, has requested that we hold this over for two weeks. He's out of town, couldn't be here and he wants to be here to discuss this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, just a point of note, I have a staple document here, it looks to be the same names on the petition three times in a row, does that look right to you? So it's not three pages of names, it's one page of names?
The, the first page on the petition is for the PUD, the second one is the planning approval and the third one is the rezoning.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for staff, I didn't think, I didn't think mobile home parks were allowed in the city.
From a zoning perspective, they are allowed in the city limits with planning approval, which is a site plan specific application. They also, due to the number of units on the property, do require rezoning to R3 multifamily residential. In this instance, each mobile home or all the mobile homes are going to be on one lot as proposed, which then necessitates the PUD. In terms of this particular application, it was previously developed as a mobile home park with 30 units. Had they obtained their permits in a timely manner, it would have been allowed to continue as a non-conforming or grandfathered use. They did not obtain their permits, hence all of these applications to bring the property into compliance.
Just curious, you said the requirement for multi, for this type of development would need planning approval?
That's correct, mobile homes require planning approval in an R1 district. In a mobile home park requires R3 and planning approval.
But there's not a planning approval.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's number, it's C. C in the application.
For the staff, what does the UDC say with regard to this?
It's a very similar process, requires R3 multifamily. It also requires a conditional use permit. Planning approval has been somewhat likened to a conditional use permit, but under the UDC it would also require council approval just as a rezoning would. So the path is very similar under the UDC.
Do we have any idea, I know it's kind of catching y'all off the spot right here. Just for one, how many units that, that property could actually support?
Hold on, we're gonna do some math.
Sorry about that. I could have numbers though, there's no dimensions.
Eight, between eight and nine. And that, well, that's not including roads because we'd have to subtract that out if it was right of way. Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners on this agenda item? Anyone else here to speak for agenda item number 12? Anyone here to speak in opposition to agenda item number 12? Okay, reminder, we only allow four, so y'all discuss amongst yourselves who would like to come down, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Tina Millar, I live at 1620 Brill Road, which is straight across from this property. Previous years, I've been there 25 years. It's been a trailer park, I suffered through it when it was a trailer park. With another trailer park or something in that manner being put on that property, our road is already, the cars travel too fast. Their driveway is directly across from mine. So there's, there's going to be a lot of problems with the trailer park coming in there. Actually, I'm the one, you know, my friend and I, we're the one who walked and got signatures, which didn't have enough time because I had medical reasons, so I wouldn't have enough time to get some more signatures. But there's, everyone in my neighborhood, we're opposed to having a trailer park brought in there because the, the thievery, the drugs, when it was a trailer park before, I used to have to go out and pick up syringes down the street in the, in the ditches. My children have watched two, you know, two people being murdered, stabbings. I don't want that across from my home for my granddaughter to have to listen to and watch. Most of us on my street are my age, my neighbor has a deaf, you know, a deaf daughter. It, I think it's going to cause a lot of problems, you know, not only with the traffic, I think there'll be a lot of wrecks. Because our tra, our street, they don't slow down. I have trouble getting in and out of my driveway. There is two driveways on that property. There's one further down, but it's not drivable. But I just wish y'all would please consider not putting a trailer park there because I lived there for 20, you know, 20 years of watching that trailer park. And I can't do it no more and my neighbors do, we all feel the same. We have people walking up and down all the time in that, you know, in our street. And we just don't want the headaches of another trailer park. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, ma'am. I, I have a question for you. Since you've lived there, there, there's a statement, there's a statement made by the staff, it's, it's in the planning approval C for my, my colleague. Says the proposal will be in harmony with the orderly and appropriate development of the district in which the use is located because the previous mobile home park was established over 60 years ago and only recently lost its legal non-conforming status. Do you agree that this is an orderly and appropriate development in accordance with the neighborhood that you live in there?
I'm sorry.
Do you agree that this is an appropriate development? With, appropriate or inappropriate? And I'll let CJ address the others, he, it's his district. But I, I, I think that may be a question mark for me on that one, for the staff. Is, is that a legal thing, Doug, on, on that C?
That is the standard of review.
So what is that measured against?
Taking into consideration the, the neighborhood, the traffic flow, will this increase traffic, is it, I mean, I hate to say, use the word that's, you know, define something by using the word, but in harmony with the neighborhood, does it fit in? Does this development cause undue burden on the surrounding area? I'm not sure how many, I, I was asking Margaret earlier about the non-conforming, I was asking Margaret earlier about the non-conforming status. And she said this was, this development was half the number of trailers that were there before, I believe. Just, that's just a fact, I'm not saying that should prove anything, that's just a fact.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm John Cutts, chairman of the Peninsula Mobile. I'm here today as a community leader in District Three and also a resident. I've got some comments as to why I think that you guys should reject this applicant's request for new zoning. The community as a whole has clearly stated through our own master plan process with the city and the city's map for Mobile process and through years of appearing before this body, that trailer parks or manufactured homes are not a desired amenity. The applicant states this is, this is a sustainable proposal. It's not sustainable to place trailer parks in mobile homes in one of the city's only coastal communities. coastal communities. The landmass at its widest point is one mile wide. That's just north of the proposed site. Coastal flooding from storms such as Hurricane Ian have proved that moving forward, proper building practices must be in place. Hurricane Katrina and other past tropical events have also caused significant wind damage in the past and certainly will in the future. We acknowledge the applicant's claim that the need for low-income housing, but is irresponsible to place the most vulnerable in the city in harm's way in a known coastal area. With coastal flooding and increase in tropical storm activity and ten- and intensity on the rise, the time to build modular homes is not now or here. There are plenty of homes in this area, stand by, ready for remodel and restoration, that would better serve a low-income housing need. While it's true there was a trailer park at this location for many years, it's also true that the community, through several different organizations, Riverside Community Action, Gulfdale Community Action, Parkway Pride, have fought diligently to get the park removed as it was just another area that was left untended by the property owner and became a site for crime, litter, and dilapidation, as you've already heard today. We do not agree with the conclusion that there was an error in the original zoning. As many know, this community grew rapidly from appalling Brookley Fields success under the county. There were no zoning rules then. Its late annexation into the city of Mobile allowed it to be an RV park. It has only been in the past fifteen to twenty years that so-called spot zoning has been recognized and an effort by the city has been made to move away from it. Peninsula Mobile encourages that we continue that effort to responsibly build this area. The site is suited for B2 or B3 business, not residential or multi-family modular. With an abundance of foot traffic in the area, the site is a prime location for a neighborhood grill or other business that is needed to support these communities. A proposal such as this is incongruent with the Peninsula Mobile's master plan that was designed in conjunction with Auburn University. Also, this plan, adopted by the city of Mobile in the new UDC code, is an obvious statement from community stakeholders that they want development and restoration in a constructive and responsible way that will last a generation, not a decade or less, with a temporary structure such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutz.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Elaine Galloway and I own a home in the South DIP area. I'm also with a volunteer group called Revitalize DIP and our focus is to address blight and litter and make our area safe. I want to say that, to my knowledge, there are already three trailer parks in the area and they're not very well taken care of. We're, we, we just oppose another trailer park.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. There's an opportunity for one more speaker in opposition? And this will be the final speaker in opposition at this ti- and at that time, the applicant will have a chance to respond.
My name is Kim Singletary and I live at sixteen twenty Brill Road. I, along with my mother, have seen the children in the area that walk home from the local high school and I feel like it is just, it opposes a major risk, not only to, as she pointed out, our neighbor who is handicapped due to being, having a deaf child, um, but the kids who walk up and down in the area, I feel like the traffic in the area is already excessively dangerous and poses a risk not only for the current residents, but the other, the schoolchildren and the people who walk back and forth to local businesses and enjoy the area as it is now. Um, and so that I ask that you oppose the current requests under this one.
Thank you, Ms. Singletary.
Thank you.
If the applicant would like to address any of the concerns that have been brought up in the public hearing, and I'll remind that you address comments to the commission and not to the audience.
My name is Robert Buckley, five seven one Lakeview Drive West, Mobile, Alabama, three six six nine five. So in, uh, in August of twenty, uh, before I purchased the property, uh, I requested and received approval from planning and zoning that this, uh, that this property could make, could, uh, continue to be a, a mobile home park. So with the, uh, a limit of fifteen is, is what was stated in the letter. Um, also with the, uh, extension of the, the non-conforming status, uh, to remain until August of twenty twenty-two. So, uh, despite the best efforts with COVID and, uh, everything, uh, going on, I was not able to reestablish the park, uh, before my non-conforming status expired. So I will say that, um, uh, I understand the, uh, the residents in the area, um, hesitation to, uh, to even, uh, ponder the thought of, of having a trailer park reestablished. But I will say that when I, um, I purchased the property in November of twenty, uh, and proceeded to clear off, uh, eight, eighteen wheeler dump truck loads of trash and debris, a burnout trailer that was left on the property, uh, I have picked up numerous, uh, trashcans full of, uh, trash off the side of the road, trying to, trying to maintain, um, you know, the, my property. I mean, you know, trying to keep it, you know, even though I'm sure the grass needs to be cut at the moment. So, uh, I would like to say that, uh, the trailers will all be new. They will, they, I will maintain the property. Uh, it'll be in accordance to the, uh, planning recommendations. Uh, and, uh, I can't imagine the traffic being a problem. I'm sure some people will be utilizing the public transportation, access to the pharmacy next door and the grocery store and, 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 and that, so. I would like to say that, uh, I just intend on making the property better as opposed to making it worse. Uh, with the property directly to the south is already B1. The blue is already B1. So to, to leave the property in question as an R1 really does not fit in with the current zoning or, and it does not fit in with the, uh, with the future zoning. So I don't believe that I'm that far out of, out of line to want it to continue to be a, a manufactured home location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Any comments, questions from commissioners for Mr. Buckley? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Thirteen. Reminder, that's the last agenda item and then we'll go into the deliberation session. Agenda Item Thirteen. I'll state it from, from here, south side of Ziegler Boulevard, west of Cody Road, extending to the west side of Cody Road. It's a subdivision and a PUD. It's been recommended for holdover until the November third planning commission meeting. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with that holdover? The applicant is present and in agreement. Is anyone else here to speak for Agenda Item Thirteen? And seeing as it still will be held over, is anyone speaking against? You can speak today or at the next meeting. Any opposition to Agenda Item Thirteen? All right. Ma'am? Oh, yep, we had a comment. Uh, we had one-page comment, uh, distributed to all the commissioners on, uh, Agenda Item Thirteen from, from an email.
Mr. Chairman, is that, was that the last thing on the agenda? I'm sorry. Okay, can, but this might be a little out of the ordinary. Can we go back, um, to the Topgolf signage?
McGowan Park, Agenda Item Nine.
I've got a question of the applicant, if they're here.
Looks as though they are. You guys, somebody want to come down so we can have a question from staff on signage for Agenda Item Nine, still in the public hearing session?
I'm not putting you on the spot, I just have a question. Name and address, please, for their, for their record?
Yeah, Todd Waldo, Topgolf, eighty-seven fifty North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas.
On the, yeah, that right there, number six and nine. Um, pardon? Well, I, I, okay. That still doesn't answer all my questions. I just, I mean, I want to make sure that the, the commission understands those two signs and why you need those two signs, because it was brought to my attention by a couple of members yesterday. Nine is a monument sign and six is a high-line sign. Now I see it's eighteen feet tall. What, what's the, the question was posed to me, what's the need for having those two signs so close together?
Uh, sure, that, so number nine, I have that on the screen here, that's just a monument sign at the main entrance to the development off the satchel page. So that will identify for customers to turn into that location to access Topgolf. Uh, sign number six is at the end of the outfield facing the building, so it's only mainly for internal viewing by guests that will be within the Topgolf. It's essentially just a enhancement to, uh, provide a, a sense of location that you're at a Topgolf. It will only be facing internal to the building as opposed to externally. It's not facing a right-of-way, it's just facing the, uh, the T-line where all of the guests will be, uh, essentially playing the Topgolf game. It would be just, it, there would not be, uh, any type of advertising on that. It would just be a, yeah, just a blank, uh, metal box. It's just a, it's a, essentially a, uh, non-illuminated box sign. Sure, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Doug. Any further comments? At this time, we'll close the public hearing session, go back to number one on the agenda for the deliberation session. Holdover from Dawes Road, recommended for tentative approval with sixteen listed conditions. And, uh, on the PUD, six findings of fact and nineteen conditions, the applicant was present and in agreement. Entertain a motion.
Second. Was there a recommendation, I'm looking through now, to, for a fence to be erected between the residential area and the apartments or the condos that are going up?
No, sir. All of it's zoned B3. It's all commercial property.
But this will end up being rezoned, correct?
No, sir.
Yeah, it's only the, um, subdivision and the PUD and the agenda. So on the subdivision, we do have a motion with a second? Any further discussion?
Does this not have to be rezoned to R3?
No, sir. Multi-family is allowed by right in B3.
This, this was one of the, the issues that folks had, is they want to make sure that there's a separation between the residential areas and the backs of the-
Okay. Um, PUD is site plan specific now. I'm looking, you know, everything on the east side of Dawes between Old Government and Glider is zoned commercially. Now, there are residential homes, but they are on commercial property and it appears that there is vacant property between this site and where the residential begins.
There's a couple hundred feet between the streets of the building and then actually old government tree. And, and this thing, if the trees are gonna remain, we're good, but if they're gonna clearcut that? Yeah, well, somebody's eventually gonna end up there. Just because nobody's here today doesn't help us tomorrow after we get this passed. And then we try and do it after the fact.
Again, I'll restate, we have a subdivision-
Is this germane to the subdivision vote?
I don't, did we have the vote on the sub? Okay, I would suggest we vote on the sub and then we can discuss the pod.
Thank you.
All in favor for the subdivision?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. On the PUD, it's been recommended for approval with six findings of fact and nineteen listed conditions. Excuse me, sixteen listed conditions. Nope, I'm right, nineteen. Entertain a motion?
Moved to approve, subject to staff recommendations and not the timing of the facts.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the PUD passes. Agenda Item Two, new subdivision application, thirty-one oh eight Lee's Lane, recommended for tentative approval with eleven conditions.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the new subdivision at thirty-one oh eight Lee's Lane passes. Agenda Item Three, two fifty-eight North Hamilton Street, recommended for tentative approval with nine listed conditions.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes at two fifty-eight North Hamilton. Number four, forty-three fifty-nine Fieldwood Drive, recommended for tentative approval with eight listed conditions.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for thirty, forty-three fifty-nine Fieldwood Drive passes. New section of the agenda, new rezoning applications, Agenda Item Five, Ms. Carlos Gant is in recusal. Recommendation for approval from staff, applicant was not present.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item Six, group application, thirty-two hundred, thirty-two oh two, Old Shell Road. We have some notes to make, but we'll take them separately. And the subdivision, recommended for tentative approval? Properly moved and seconded with the amendment to number two. All, any comments from staff?
Just keep it technical. Uh, if we could also waive BD six, which is the radius requirements of the sub regs at twenty-five foot minimum.
Properly amended mo- emotion amended and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes on the PUD, recommended for approval with five findings of fact and thirteen listed conditions. And we had some notations for items one, two, and three and conditions.
Moved to approve, subject to staff recommendations and not the timing of the facts. Eight three, deleting comments number one, two, and three, requiring non-utility use agreement with applicable.
Did you want to delete number two, uh, excuse me, number one, because it did not maintain that twenty-four foot drive? Yes.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes for the rezone recommendation, been recommended for approval to pass on to the city council.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for recommendation of rezone passes. Agenda Item seven, twelve sixty-three Baker Street, Mr. Kirk Matei is in recusal. We have a subdivision, a rezone. We'll take them separately. Applicant was present, recommendation for tentative approval with ten listed conditions on the subdivision. Mm-hmm. That's correct. Thank you. Properly moved and seconded with the amendments to conditions three and four, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes on the rezone, recommended for approval. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes for recommendation of rezone. Agenda Item eight, thirty-six sixty-one Dolphin Street, Dolphin Way Baptist Church subdivision. We have a subdivision with tentative approval recommendation, twelve listed conditions, a PUD. We'll take them separately.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation. And this is on the subdivision.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On the PUD, we have three findings of fact and thirteen listed conditions. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Agenda Item nine, McGowan Park.
I, I had a question on this one. In the, in the package, one of the signs is eight hundred and sixteen square feet with approval, even though we're saying it has to be, they have to produce all sizes, will we inadvertently be allowing an eight hundred and sixteen square foot sign?
The, the applicant may be able to clarify this, however, staff is of the opinion that that is a typo because that is supposed to be the address for the building, and I find, I, I don't believe that that's the correct size.
Just for clarification, would you like to comment on that, please, sir, since you're here and present with us? Nope.
I think that was number, sign number five that was in question? That is an address sign, it's two feet tall, approximately, you know, fifty square feet, so pretty minor just for identification purposes.
All right. Just wanted to make sure one of the airplane signs.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, we have supplied some supplemental documentation to, uh, to the city just to clarify some of those items that might not have been, uh, you know, properly addressed in the application.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Carlos. So we'll take them separately on number nine, subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with eleven listed conditions. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. On the PUD, we have five findings of fact and thirteen listed conditions, the applicant is present and was in agreement. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda Item ten. Dolphin Street, east of Sage, and extending to the west, termini of Exeter Drive and Sherwood Drive. We have a subdivision with a tentative approval and fourteen listed conditions, and a PUD with five findings of fact and nineteen listed conditions, and a rezone recommendation. We'll take them separately, the applicant was present and in agreement. On the subdivision?
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on the PUD.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations with the findings of fact, A through E. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion on the PUD? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, rezone recommendation for approval. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Number eleven, Spanish Alley, thirty-five twenty Spanish Alley, recommended for denial on the subdivision and denial on the PUD. The applicant was present, uh, and we had multiple comments from, uh, the audience. We'll take them separately, move to, um, a motion for denial and seconded on the subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the subdivision is denied.
Do we take a vote on something that we can't even do?
We're just taking what the staff has recommended that we do, yeah. Thank you, Carlos. And then on the PUD, recommendation, recommendation for denial. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The PUD is denied.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a comment to the, to the staff. It might be that this applicant needs to be directed to the, uh, police department, I think it's Project Shield, the monitors cameras. A lot of the neighborhoods have done that, so that might be a good place to direct him, uh, for some assistance if he hadn't already been directed there.
I got you.
Are we on twelve now? Agenda Item twelve, sixteen seventeen Brill Road. Uh, we have a subdivision that was recommended for tentative approval, we have findings of fact on a PUD, and we have, uh, a recommendation for approval with sixteen listed conditions. And then we have a, um, a planning approval as well.
I make a motion, motion hold over all of them.
And then we have, we had comments from commissioners, uh, I'll open that back up for comments from commissioners.
Well, I, 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 let's go ahead, and I think with everybody that came down today, I think we can go ahead and, and move this. Either way, it's got to go to the city council if it even approves, asks this. So instead of having folks to have to come back down, let's go ahead and, and action it if it's going to.
What items go before city council?
Yeah.
To answer Mr. Gant's question, regular process, straightforward, the rezoning still goes before the city council for final approval. However, uh, you know, any aggrieved party can also appeal the PUD and the planning approval applications to the city council.
Is it currently not a lot of legal records, so the subdivision, if we get the subdivision, it would at least be making a lot of legal records.
That is correct.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion on the subdivision passes. On the PUD, recommended for approval with five findings of fact and sixteen listed conditions.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I drove down Brill and Clubhouse and, uh, and, you know, the amount of, I mean, people are treating it like a highway. I mean, it really, they're not exaggerating when they say that, and the amount of litter and the, you know, there's a lot of people that walk on the side of the street there, so I mean, you're going to have a little bit of litter because of that, but, uh, I don't think that this is, uh, in keeping with the, with the orderly development of the neighborhood. The fact of the matter is, the, the grandfathered-in status lapsed, so, um, and Mr. Cutts, I guess, left, but he did make a, a valid point. It's not a, it's not a resilient addition to the neighborhood either, so, um, with that being said, I'm going to be voting against the proposition.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, echo those comments as well. I, I think you see B-one, B-two on, on that side, and there were comments made before this commission that, that they believe, the residents believe, it's more in keeping with that. And then everything else is R-one. So I, I also agree that R-three with the, the multifamily use in this area is, is not conforming to what we see in that area. I, I think there's still value with that, but I, I think it would be best served is, is either transitioned to R-one or, or B-one, B-two in keeping with this around the area. So I, I will also be voting against.
We have a motion and a second on the PUD for, uh,
Denial.
Denying. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppo, any, yeah, any opposed to the motion? The motion does, the motion to deny passes on the PUD. On C, the planning approval?
Second.
There's a motion to deny the planning approval with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to deny passes. And then on the rezone, from R-one to R-three. Motion to deny the rezone recommendation to the city council, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to deny the rezone passes.
Mr. Chairman, I might take a point or a comment from applicant. I think he made a comment about having cleaned it up, so I think, you know, the city would definitely be appreciative of your efforts there. I know the community would be as well. Uh, I would encourage you to work with those folks that were here, uh, to kind of find a way forward to do something positive with it properly. Uh, I know the community is, uh, very involved in trying to, trying to lift it up and make it better. I think, I think you would probably find them to be your biggest advocates, uh, if you continue to work with them.
Thank you for your comments. Agenda Item thirteen, recommended for holdover to November third, the applicant was present and in agreement.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, we'll combine those, subdivision and PUD for holdover, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to holdover. Any further business from staff?